Okay, so I'm calling the auditor. For the meeting to start. That's number one. We have no old things that we have to go over before prior. Does anybody have any questions on the agenda? Anything they see that's incorrect that needs to be changed? Okay, I guess as far as we can go, we can go to two updates, Marie.
Sure, I sent the utility status report out earlier. Things have been sort of steady, so I don't have any real big news to report. Everything's going all right at each plant. I've got it cooled up a little bit. Our road project is going well. We had one change order signed for a little over $11,000 the other day, and I think another one's coming in for 8,000. But other than that, they are on schedule to be substantially complete in probably two months and then final maybe in June. Final meaning restoration and everything like that. So we are going to be contacting the state to see whether they are okay with us beginning to inundate the reservoir to the Phase Two level when they're substantially complete and out of the water related things, or if they're gonna make us wait until the grass is growing and the pavement is striped and things like that. So I'm hoping it'll be the former and we can start filling this thing up and letting it, letting it rule soon enough. So sooner than later on that.
I guess B, you know, budget process. Unless someone has questions on that. Anybody have questions?
Yeah, does anyone have questions on the update? We did have our water superintendent retire after 32 years. So I think I, I put in the notes who the interim is, and we are currently advertising for that position. It closes on February 19th. The last time I checked, we had 11 applicants. So we still have a few more weeks to go. We hope we get a really good applicant pool. If all of that goes well, we'll hope to have a new superintendent named in April.
There's nobody internal that can do it, that would be able to take over that position?
Well, it's, any internal applicants can apply. But no, there was no one, a level like that, we would choose to advertise internally and externally.
Go ahead, sir.
Are you required by law to publicize the opening?
I don't think that we're required by law. We just think it's the right thing to do.
I, I agree with you. I just thought maybe.
Yeah, I, you know, I can ask Haley, but I, I never even gave it a second thought.
Just curious.
Marie, going back to the earlier point about the reservoir, could you remind me how long it takes to fill the reservoir once you start? Of course, it depends on time of year rainfall, but just what's the range?
I have no idea. We, we are allowed to fill it 10 feet. I can say when we get a decent rain, we can gain up to five or six inches across the reservoir. Some of the heavy rainfall that we've had, we're now at 41 and a half feet. We were running at 39 to 40 a few months ago. So it really is just weather dependent. And we do have our minimum releases that we need to abide by, and they change monthly between, I think, one CFS and I want to say some of the highest months are four and a half CFS.
That's right.
Noting through.
Not that now. But they, they take in just rain? Or is there runoff that runs into them?
I assume, yeah, there's runoff, of course.
That's like tied to that?
It's not, there's not like drainage ditches or anything emptying into the reservoir. It's surface runoff. And then at certain times of the year, we do get groundwater infiltration.
So it sounds like before the summer season, before August, unless there's some big delay, should be able to put quite a lot of water in there.
We hope so.
Thank you.
And I know we talked, actually before you hopped on, Marie, a little bit about the breaks in town, but it doesn't look like we're getting a whole lot of those going on with the freeze, with the really low temperatures we've been having.
Don't jinx it, Jen. Don't jinx it.
All right.
No, we, actually, it's been pretty good. We had a water main break behind the wooden nickel. I was still able to pick up my wings that night, and the staff was complimentary on the, on the response of our staff. Totally understood that stuff like that happens. The other main break we had was in front of the car wash. Been having trouble with that 16-inch Owassa water main that we assumed ownership of several years back. And looking actually, before we get too much demand on that line, to line the inside of this water main, because it looks like there's potential soil contamination that's corroding the outside of this old cast iron pipe. Of course, that pipe was installed in the late 70s. So it's, you know, getting to its useful life, but we need to protect it and make it better. So we're going to be interconnecting it. And hopefully, I'm going to get that request for quotes out in, in the middle of this month. So we'll be interconnecting it, and then I'm going to look at rehabilitating a segment of it. And I'm thinking, given our break history, it'll be between 85 and Orange Grove Street.
Anyone else, anything?
I was just gonna piggyback on Jen real quick. Jen stole my thunder there a little bit. So that amount of breaks, is that considered low for us then? That for winter, or winter month, or?
Yeah, I, where there's been times where we have had, you know, three to four, even up to six breaks on some of our older cast iron water mains in a, in a month. So yeah, I would say we've been pretty fortunate so far.
Anyone else? Okay, we can go to B, budget process update.
Okay, well, we just kicked off our budget. We normally start this process like in November. So because of the crazy COVID year that we had last year, we are, we are looking at a, at a few things. One, we are going to go back to our three-year budgeting process. Last year, we dropped it down to one. We had to scramble and cut our budgets in a short time period after coronavirus hit. We are looking at new budgeting software that we are not going to be implementing this, this year, but we will be getting training on it, so we will be ready for next year. The budget team has done a selection on that, so we have not seen it yet. The budget is due in 15 days. So, yeah, it's gonna be a whirlwind. I actually have the schedule. So it's, it's due on February 19th. And then we're gonna start our budget review meetings in March. The board will hear the budget May 10th. A budget workshop will be May 24th and the public hearing. And then another workshop could potentially be, if it's needed, on June 7th. And then the budget adoption will be June 14th. That is the plan right now. Initial word is that we probably will do our best not to raise rates again, given the situation that is going to only add to our unfunded request from last year. Eric did tell me he's going to be considering more how we can utilize our system development fees and even dip into our reserves to pay for some of these outstanding and more critical projects. Just because that, this is the whole reason that we have such a good reserve. We have our good rainy day savings. I guess I'll call it maybe a coronavirus savings this year. But that is exactly the purpose. So if he makes an exception to allow us to dip down to our, our minimum and not keep as much padding, we'll be able to get some, some projects through. I can't think of any, just like total emergency. We have to spend this money, except for with the development coming online from Collins Ridge and the Research Triangle Logistics Park gearing up. I do, I really want to focus on some sewer rehab and replacement. So our initial modeling results showed that we need to upsize some interceptors, and, and we need to start that process to be able to actually get shovels in the ground and backhoes and all that within a decent time period before we experience any capacity issues.
Comments? Drew?
I have a question about what is the status in terms of outstanding revenue? People not being able to pay their water bill? And, you know, are revenues the same as like last year? Or is it lower with the coronavirus?
The revenue, there is probably, and I'm, I'm just speaking from memory. I can get this information from Daphna and pass it to you. There are several people that were put on the payment plan. The last I heard, we were like 300,000 in arrears. I don't know what that number is today. So I'm gonna make a note to ask Daphna about that. And by the way, Daphna just announced that she's leaving on the 25th. So, yeah, she had an offer.
This month?
Yes. She had an offer she couldn't refuse from Meven, and I think it's closer to her home. So, you know, congratulations to her. Woe, woe is us. But we will persevere. And I will make sure I get that data from her before she goes. I'm not, I haven't, this is literally just announced to us yesterday, I think, so.
So are people actually using more water since more people are working from home?
Well, I don't think our, our water use has significant, significantly increased. We are, we've always been about 95, 99% residential, and it, I haven't really noticed a difference. When, last year, I started tracking it, and honestly, I haven't tracked it lately.
That's understandable. Go ahead, Jen.
People quit showering.
That could be true.
That could be true. They don't see anybody anymore.
You're raising your hand, Jen, to speak?
Yeah.
Or are you raising your hand because you're not the one showering?
Oh, no. I will, I do have serious questions, though. I, I do think, did, just, I think the state moratorium on utility disconnects did end in like October, correct?
Yes, we started doing our cutoffs then.
That, okay, just wanted to confirm that part. And then I don't think there's anything that is coming from the state for any relief for utilities, correct?
We have not heard anything. I have not.
Yeah, and I know, I, I have a friend over in the GA, and I think she said they started passing some budget stuff today, but it wasn't the most friendly of budgets.
There's still talk about local governments getting some assistance, and I know that we did receive a second round of, I think it was CARES Act funding through the county, and we did divide that up like we did the first round, I believe, where some of it went to help utility payments. Of course, I made a donation myself to OCIM at Christmas time, and they did say it was already gone and out the door. So they have great needs for a lot, a lot of people on the waitlist to help, help a system pay in their bill.
Barry has, Barry Hupp has a.
Yeah, I just, the revenue that we're behind, the 300 and some thousand, is, will that be forgiven? Or will that come back in some shape or form from government? Or where does that stand?
Forgiving, meaning it'll get written off?
Yeah.
We've put people on payment plans, and we've given them a year. As more people fall behind, you know, I'm really not sure how we're going to handle that. I know our normal process would be to go through the collections agency at some period of time, but I'm gonna add that to my list to get these questions answered from Daphna.
So at this point, you're looking to recoup that, that revenue that?
Yes. Absolutely. Understanding it's very difficult.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, well, we know probably by our meeting next month. I know that there's talk about not raising the rates, but will we know if that's actually gonna be feasible, given some of the projected shortfalls from COVID? Or are we just gonna get ready to go into the red?
I don't know that we're gonna go into the red. I think we're gonna try to stay in the black, but use some of our alternative means to fund things instead of raising the rates. I can tell you one thing that I have been looking at, and I have not yet discussed it with Eric, is some of our other administrative fees. I was comparing some of our fees with surrounding utilities and setting like what the fees would be for a hypothetical subdivision project. And it looks like there's a few areas that we could potentially explore charging fees. For an example, would be a lot of our surrounding utilities charge a per linear foot on inspection fees. They charge more plan review fees than we do. Ours is $500 per review for water and $500 per review for sewer. A lot of the other utilities would charge a per linear foot. So if I had 2,000 linear feet of water main, you would multiply that by the charge plus the sewer main, plus some of them even charge like per tap. So they, they get all that together. It actually looks like an average fee, and I'm still working on my spreadsheet to make this case, is that, you know, for my hypothetical project, which was like 3,000 feet of water main, 100 houses, something like that, we would collect around $50, $200. And other utilities are charging between 15 and $25,000. Now, the flip side of that, that we do need to consider is that we do have high system development fees. And I do have a call into Raptelis, which is a, a financial consulting firm who last did our system development fee calculations in 2018 to make sure that none, none of those fees that I'm talking about were included, because we don't want to double charge. And we, and so we have to weigh a lot of things, but I'm just giving you a heads up on, I'm thinking about ways that we can make better revenues and keep the rates steady.
Drew?
What is that, you know, the, the developers are gonna pass that on through their housing pricing? So how are we going to have affordable housing if we start adding in some additional fees?
Well, that is a consideration and something to look at with the neighboring utilities, because like I said, all these neighboring utilities are having those type of upfront fees for inspection, for CCTV review, for calling our inspectors out when they're not ready and wasting, wasting our time. Now, one other thing to consider in addition to how those costs might get passed and whether that will affect affordable housing in the town is that other utilities actually, as part of their fee, provide their town or city inspectors full-time. We do not. We have two inspectors. So part of the water and sewer extension agreement that we execute with the developer requires them to hire third-party inspection services, and we just go and spot check what's going on and make sure the project is progressing okay. So that, you know, there's a lot of factors. Like I said, these are things that I'm thinking about, whether they make sense, whether Eric thinks they're worthwhile to take to the board, and whether the board thinks that they are good to enact is a whole nother thing. But these are just things that I'm trying to think of to.
I just want to keep it in the back of our mind about housing pricing, and I'm sure the, the board is going to consider that anyway, because I know that they're big on that, so.
Marie?
Be prepared to answer that question when the.
That is a good question.
Just one question from Jen. Go ahead. When they do the hookups and sewer lines, we don't go out and look at the line before they fill it back in?
Yes, we do, but we also have the third-party inspector for large developments, and they do daily reports, and they give us those reports weekly. So we sort of tag-team on making sure that things are looked at.
Do they take photos of it and stuff? Do they?
I'm sorry?
Do they put photos in the reports?
Yes, there are photos. I, I don't know that there's photos of every single lateral, but we do televise them.
Okay, that's, go ahead, Jen. I'm sorry.
No, it was just the, and kind of the last question I, I had thought of, because Marie mentioned it's predominantly on the, the large-scale projects where things will get passed on, but it's gonna be a nickel versus $5. But what is the timing on RLTP? And are we, and are we truly on the hook for it, given its location? I wasn't sure if that one actually fell into our water jurisdiction. Okay.
It is.
And so is that aggressively timed to get built? I know Collins Ridge already has some stuff under development being built out, but was not sure how RLTP fit with our utilities in our world.
They last told us, it's been a few months since we had a meeting with them, but they last told us they, it is approved. It's coming. They're looking to probably have something, a building built, at least one of their shower buildings. I think there's maybe four total. Well, they said this year. However, their attorney just asked for a word version of our water and sewer extension agreement. So I'm sure there's going to be some redlining and some talking between the attorneys to negotiate the best agreement. Once that agreement is set, I know they've got the engineering. They already have permits, unless they change the design. Orange County did the permitting, and those permits are still valid. They really don't have much to do to prep once the agreement is negotiated and we approve the, the final construction plans, if they have changed from the original ones we approved.
I, I drove in there the other day just to look to see what was going on, and I was surprised at the amount of houses that were built already.
At Collins Ridge, yes. So Collins Ridge is another story. I just updated Eric and Margaret and planning about it, but there's some problems with the, that we detected on the CCTV of the sewers that they're gonna basically need to come in and put a lining into new sewer pipe. So we're gonna be taking over a new sewer system that is newly rehabilitated.
What are they gonna do? Creation of dirt and stuff that's getting in there?
Well, it's hard to say, but I think the way that they put the pipes together, a lot of the lining on the duct or iron pipe got chipped to every joint. So that means metal is showing, and metal in sewers means corrosion. There's also some, some pipes that are what we call egg-shaped, where they're maybe over-compacted. So we want to make sure that they pass the low-pressure test, the mandrel test. They've, they've had some struggles out there, and they are definitely under the gun to get the water and sewer approved. We have not received any as-built drawings to review, no engineering certifications. We have started trying to do our walkthrough to help them out, but they have not received a formal punch list. Right now, they're working on the sewer defects. They have, you know, some cracked pipes, some cracked laterals, a lot of dirt in the pipes. If you've seen that site, it's gigantic. And normally, you wouldn't construct that much at one time. Their contractor said this is like constructing four phases.
All at once.
All at once, and it is a lot. It's just overwhelming. In the meantime, DR Horton has issued their, they have their first plat, even their, I think their second plat recorded. We have approved building permits, but the problem is that they can't get the sewer and the water to an acceptable level. They're gonna have some people waiting for their certificate of occupancy, and they know that, and we are doing what we can to ensure that we get a viable system that's not a problem right off the bat. Personally, I would prefer that they dig and replace everything, but that's just not feasible. They've already.
Why is it not feasible?
Due to the, because we're trying to be a good, a good.
Doing the right thing.
We're trying to compromise with them as long as, and, and part of that is that I, I've said to Eric that I would like to do an addendum to their agreement to do a five-year extended warranty and make sure, like, normally, we do a, under their agreement, I'll say, they do a one-year warranty. We just changed our boilerplate for future to do a two-year warranty. Given what we've seen, I want to ask them for a five-year warranty. At the end of the warranty period, we usually ask them to televise the sewers again and do smoke testing. The sewers are a bigger problem than, than the water, so we don't really ask much on the water side for testing. It's already in service. We'll know if there's, if there's leaks in the warranty period. They fix them. But I want to ask them to mandrel some of the pipes that are oval-shaped. I've, I've talked with the manufacturing company of the pipe just to talk about the lining issues and the egg-shaped pipe and how that will affect its operation. So we're just getting to a point where we feel comfortable taking it and they're not delaying DR Horton.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that scares me with the system like this is I, I've seen this happen before. If there's pipes that aren't perfectly flat and plots are sticking up, that's a problem, because you get soap and this buildup of soap and detergents in that area, and then it gets compounded every time someone uses the system. And it, it actually could take a couple of years till something really backs up. Did, did we ever purchase a camera?
Yes, we have a nice camera rig.
Okay, you, you did get it. That's what brand, you don't know what brand?
I want to say it's from Envirosite.
Okay, okay. Because I know I was talking to them when they were looking for it, but that's, I'm glad they got. Okay, okay. Because I know I was talking to them when they were looking for it, but that's, I'm glad they got something now. Because they may have to go in there from time to time and look around and make sure, before the warrant, especially before the warranty is up.
Absolutely. Well, the developer is to pay for, we have a CCTV spec. Most of the, the company that does most of the developers televising is Vision NC. There's another company that did the Collins Ridge. There were a few administrative issues with those tapes that they had to actually go back and redo some of it because we couldn't tell what line was what, because the header was, just stuff like that. So it's been, it's been a lot of time on our staff trying to help them. But I think, you know, we sort of see the end of the tunnel and hopefully there'll be people in those homes soon.
Okay, Jen, you go ahead. I don't, I don't know if we have to just be talking about this at this point.
Well, I was going to just extend on that. And these problems with Collins Ridge, are they going to be compounded when we start redeveloping Daniel Boone? And should we, is there something to come out of this to either prevent future problems when Daniel Boone comes up or that need to be addressed in order to connect with anything that goes on in Daniel Boone?
As for the issues we're seeing now, it's really, I don't think it'll affect the operate, it'll, it won't impact Daniel Boone. It's not a capacity, it's not a structural issue. It's more of an operational concern. And it, it's, I guess it's structural in the sense of the, of the missing chipped lining. But if they line those sewers, then there shouldn't be a future issue with corrosion. And that's one of our concerns.
And I think we'd fall into that whole section there. It wouldn't have any down, down the line that it would probably affect.
Well, some of it's that, it's basically the outfalls where they use the ductile iron. So there would be sewage going through those. But again, if they line them, we're looking at the firm who's doing it, making sure they're experienced installers. They're actually coming out in the morning. So in about 11 and a half hours, I'll be out there meeting the, the rep at Collins Ridge just to hear what he has to say. And I've been talking to the regional manager of this lining company just to get some comfort. But yes, part of the amendment that I would like to propose to the agreement will say, get, please get this right in the future where, you know, we can't keep going like this.
Barry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just offer an opinion. I, I think this is an example of exactly why we need to consider the, the tap fees and the upfront fees for the developer. I know Saru is concerned about, you know, adding to the price of a new home. But, you know, there's no reason why existing homes should, should be paying for, for these types of problems. And I, I'm just, I'm just saying kudos to, to those that, that are thinking like that. And, and then also, I just forgot my thought, but yeah, any, anyway, I, I think, I think the upfront costs, while, while difficult to swallow, is certainly a better way to go than, you know, we're, we're a community that the, the water and sewer rates are extremely high anyways. So front-end loading that, I, I think is, is the right, right thought. And, and the five-year warranty that you, that you were talking about, I think that's right on too. I mean, you can put a Band-Aid on anything, but you know, how long will that Band-Aid last?
Any other comments?
The life of a sewer pipe?
A properly installed sewer pipe can last anywhere from 60 to 100 years.
Yep.
So five years really isn't that long of a warranty, considering the lifespan of the sewer pipe and how long it has to fail because of their faulty installation.
I just want to men, mention that five years is something that they did incorrectly. They'll probably see it within five years. If not after that, it could be shifting in the ground. It's just really not their fault. There could be a lot of different things that can happen. One last thing, when they do do the lining of the pipes, someone just email me, Marie, if you can, and just let me know. Because I'd love to go out and just see how they're doing it.
Sure.
I would appreciate it.
It's going to be a, it's not going to be cast in, it's not going to be the typical cured-in-place thick resin sock. It's going to be a spray-on epoxy lining. Basically what the pipe has now, but they're just going to go through and coat everything again.
Probably double up on the joints and stuff.
Yeah, and plus it'll hit some of the laterals as well.
Yeah, no, it sounds like, it sounds like you're doing the right thing, so.
Good question.
Rob, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Now, quickly, second, Barry, Barry's point that it's, I think it's important for new customers to pay their own way as opposed to burden the existing customers, just as a principle for auto-operated grid system. There's going to be some subsidies here and there, but I think in general, every new customer should pay their own way.
I'm sorry, Rob. Go ahead.
So Marie, going back to our TLP real quick, can you remind me what, what we've committed to in terms of water that we are allotting them? Is it 100, 100,000?
108,000 gallons per day. Now, that is in the agreement that we made with Orange County back in, I want to say, 2017. I, that is what I have said, you know, I don't want to go back on that. That's established and that's how they, you know, got the developer to come in. The developer has asked for much more. They have asked if we will go as high as 300,000 to 500,000 gallons a day, and I cannot commit that at this time.
Right, okay. So, yeah, I just wanted to remember how much we had kind of committed to them because I know that they were asking for more than that.
Yeah, well, then they asked, well, can we do that for three shifts? 108,000 gallons a day for three shifts? I'm like, well, that's like 324,000 gallons a day, so no.
Go ahead, Jerome.
I just want to clarify my position. It's not that I don't think that the developer should be paying these costs. It's just that I want to make sure that we think in terms of affordable housing and how we're able to address that, given the amount that's going to be added to the home of the price. I, I'm not saying that they shouldn't pay these fees.
Any other comments?
And we were talking about budget.
Thank you, Marie. Thanks so much for all that work you're doing, all the information you end up giving us. We will appreciate it. Let's go on to number three, which is member terms and replacements. Julie, and where are we at with, I know you'd mentioned to me someone was interested in coming on the board. We don't know how important it is right now to add someone to the board. But, and is there anybody that's timing out?
Not till October, I think.
Okay, so we're kind of squared away for the whole year.
We're good for a while.
Anybody?
Things I wanted to mention, and I do think I said this in an email, like you're totally meeting your charter. It says between, I think it says between what, four?
Four to eight, I think. Okay.
But pros and cons to that. So I wanted you guys to discuss whether you actually wanted to bring on an eighth person, if you felt that was necessary. And then after that, I wanted you to discuss the meeting, meeting schedule, whether you needed to meet every month.
Okay, any comments? Go ahead.
I say we wait to, if we want to go up to full, let's do it after we can get back in person.
I agree.
I thought it might be useful for the one candidate that has expressed some interest. I think he'd be a real asset to the board.
Well, I'm not sure that he's really interested. He just asked if we were going to fill that position. So I don't know if he is or not.
Yeah, let me just take the motion on that so we can go through it. Anyone for adding a member? And a motion, anyone for not adding any new members next year? One, two. Only two people? Three?
I, I am, I can go either way. I just, in terms of getting somebody onboarded and ramped up, I have a feeling, one, when we get to the next item about meeting schedules, we're going to have a more compressed or we're not going to have as many meetings. So onboarding during that might not be the most conducive thing in the world. And two, because of some of the bigger issues we need to discuss and think about, given their budgetary in nature, budgets compressed this year, COVID has put a squeeze on everything.
My, my biggest fear with that is, you know, they really won't get to really know the board. When you're sitting in a room and you're around everybody and you talk to each other, you're sitting here in front of a camera. To me, it's just not going to come across. And I don't think they'll feel connected and they may end up dropping off the board. That's my opinion, so, I mean, everybody else.
Could I make a motion that we wait until we're meeting face-to-face again to add someone to the board?
Go ahead, okay. Anybody want to second that first? Well, that's you, so who wants to second it?
I mean, I'll second it. I can, I'm not the strongest opinion on it, but I just kind of.
I think that's a good thing that we're doing and it's approved. Just make that approval. Wait till next year or when we do start to meet. And we can all meet again, which will be probably another 20 years from now.
Don't say that.
No, no, it'll be 2022.
Actually, I think we'll probably be okay by August.
I got my first shot so far, so I feel good.
I got my first shot.
I got my first shot.
Got my first shot, yeah.
Oh, all the oldies are.
It's going to be a while.
I'm just going to throw something in here before Marie says something on the, be on the meeting schedule. I was thinking that it might be a good idea for us to meet at least every three months because I think we need to connect with each other. I feel, feel it's important so we don't lose interest in what we do. I don't know how we all, all of us feel about it, but that's my opinion. But that doesn't mean we have to do what I'm saying. I, I would love everybody to give me some comments on that. And Marie, you can talk first if you want.
It's really your decision on it. Happy to oblige whatever you want, but it has been a little slow going. There's really not much going on with the rates. We need to pause that and we actually maybe need to pause that for a little while because changing a rate structure now would really mess up maybe our projections and trying to figure out when we're coming out of this and where we stand. So just implementing any type of rate changes we had planned is probably going to be paused for a while.
When would you think the meetings might be? In your opinion, just asking your opinion.
In my opinion, I like the idea of quarterly and, and, or every other month, but I really don't think we need to meet every month, in, in my opinion. But again, we'll do whatever you guys want to do.
Well, when I first came on the board, we did meet every two months. And then all of a sudden, because of the increase in the rates, then we started meeting every month. Go ahead, Jen.
I was going to say, and I think we, our charter says we have to meet quarterly at minimum.
Okay.
I think that kind of handstrings us.
Julie, you have something to say?
None.
Okay, because I put it through your hand. Anybody else?
No, I was moving my glasses.
Any other?
Barry, if it was a motion to make it every three months, I'll second it.
Rob has a, has a question.
I think a question going back to the, the additional member. So you guys had, had a motion, had a second. Do you need to take a vote on that or?
Yeah, we do.
You're correct. I didn't do that correctly.
Okay.
Does anybody want to give me, bring that up again?
Okay, I made the motion that we wait to bring someone else on the board until we're able to meet face-to-face.
Okay, and who wants to second that? I think it was Jen you seconded.
Jen, Jen seconded.
All in favor? Okay, thank you. That was my fault, everyone. I did that incorrectly.
That's one.
Are we keeping track, Barry?
Oh, you have a lot more than this for me. Okay, so let's, we got that done and we're going back to the schedule. Do we have anybody that would like the, every three months, does someone want to give me their vote on that? Jen, okay, anybody want to second that?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, now we just got to decide on the, the next one. Do we do it three months from now or is that a good time, Marie? Or do we, because you were talking about the budget for the increases and stuff that we're not going to increase at this point. But is there some point where you think it might be better for us to meet as far as everything going on with voting on everything?
Well, where are we at? So we're at February, March, April, May, could be the next meeting. That way you'll know at least what will be in the budget and I can talk to you about that. In the meantime, I can send out the information that Saru was asking about and the money, where we stand with the customers being behind and whether that money will ever be written off or if we're going to still pursue collecting it. So I can, I can communicate with you, you know, one way and send information out to you. I can still send you the monthly utilities reports. Those also go into the board's agenda packet, so you can also see them there. If you guys want to call some type of special meeting, all we need to do is announce it in advance. So that's always an option. If there's something pops up, that's a big concern that you all want to talk about. But I think the, the main thing is the, the board at their last meeting was going over their committee assignments and they couldn't answer the question about us. So I want to be able, on a Monday, to be able to let them know what the meet, the actual meeting schedule would be so that they can assign their board member to represent.
Sure. I, I guess the next meeting then would be on May the 6th. Does anyone want to make a motion for that?
We have to. I think because we already voted to go quarterly, it's already.
Okay, so we'll just go with that, that date, Julie, that's fine?
That's fine.
Okay.
So it would be May 6th, August 5th? May 6th, August 5th? August, November 4th?
Okay. Everybody have that?
That sound good.
Any other comments that we need to discuss at this point?
I have two questions.
What? Go ahead.
Not on that, if there's other business, I have two.
Okay, we'll go to, we'll go to the, as far as number four, public comments, we have no, nobody waiting to speak, so we can go past that one. And we can go to five, future agenda items. Who has anything to discuss with that?
I do have a presentation I can send you. The board received a presentation on the audit, the CAFER. I can share that presentation with you guys. Daphna just sent it to me today. If you're interested in seeing the overall water and sewer funds from last year. Overall, I think it was a good audit. I didn't hear anything really bad that we had done or things seemed to look okay.
Yeah, I had several people in this, this area on next door that were complaining about their bills being high this month. I don't know how, you know, I just think people are using more water and they don't realize it. I, I don't know. I'll have to look into it myself and just see what's going on. I didn't read it. My wife had noticed it on there. Any other comments? Go ahead, Jen.
Just to clarify, much like you just. Um, just to clarify, much like you just mentioned Nextdoor, we're not responsible for anything at New Hope because their Nextdoor post about the creek turning black was a little bit terrifying.
I didn't hear that. New Hope.
I think it's down south of like forty and eighty-five. I'm pretty sure it's on the mosses side.
I think so. Well, I mean, I live on New Hope Creek and I can assure you it was not black. It is running right behind my house and it's beautiful.
I would imagine if during a storm, it's going to get pretty brown.
It gets brown. It gets brown, that's for sure.
Okay, and then just because this is what I asked before we started going live. We only have the water main break behind the nickel, but what caused the flooding down in front of the diner in like December? It was going down Chertan Street in like the middle of December. And then there was a bunch of like shutting off the road on Lake Shore and Jones for a couple of weeks.
I want to say that we did some flushing in front of the five fifteen condos on North Chertan. I don't know if it would have flowed down that far. We did have the sixteen-inch water main break on South Chertan in front of the Autowriffic car wash. Otherwise, I'm not sure it was utilities related.
Okay, that was kind of what I wanted to know. Was it utilities or somebody in the neighborhood doing something they should?
Not that I know. And on Lake Shore and Jones, they may have been installing a tap. We've had a few tap requests.
Yeah, they were doing that, but that's way up there where they're building the new houses yet. So.
Any other comments you have out there? Okay, I just wanted to say thank you, everybody, for being patient with me. I'm not the best at doing this. I just try hard. I really appreciate everybody showing up. I know that it's not an exciting night, but and I hope everybody stays healthy and well. And with that, does anybody want to make an adjournment?
I will both move a jurn and say go heels in the game over the weekend because I know this is going to be Duke.
Who I hear is second.
I'll second.
And let's all say, all in favor?
Good night.
Good night. I know.
Artie, you did great. You did great, Artie.